Welcome to the City Council meeting for October 21st, 2019. I would call this meeting to order and ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing Oh Canada. Well, thank you to the Grand Prairie Council Choir for that a cappella rendition of Oh Canada. Fantastic job, everyone. What a great way to start off. The third year of our council term. We'll move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I move the council adopt the minutes of the City Council meeting held by Monday, October 7th as presented.
Thanks, Councillor Minhas. Are there any errors or omissions that we need to deal with before we adopt that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then the adoption of the agenda, we have one additional item. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 7.1, the IAFF collective agreements.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. So an additional item under 7.1. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the open delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have in our afternoon session of every regular city council meeting where anyone in the community can come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I don't see any of the media rushing forward, although this would be a prime time for an interview if you really think about it. It would all be at your disposal. But I don't see any members of the media coming forward or any members of the public link to come forward, but I would just make that reminder that we do have this opportunity at every afternoon session. We also have a scheduled session for scheduled delegations in our evening session of council, and so there are two opportunities for anyone who wishes to come forward to council to do so. Since we have no delegations this afternoon, we'll move on. We have no items of unfinished business, and that will take us right to that item 7.1, the IAFF collective agreement. Is there somebody from administration that would care to give this just a brief introduction? I'll look to our acting city manager.
There we go. Okay, thanks, Mayor Given. Just to let council know, over the course of last several months, we've met numerous times with the negotiating committee from the IAFF. We had a team of city negotiation, well, a negotiating team with the city as well. After several meetings, we did come to an agreement and which we think is a fair agreement. It's also within the budget that we did have. So we just wanted to present that today and get council to ratify.
Thanks very much. Director Miller, any discussion, sorry, I would look for a motion then to put that on the council table for discussion and debate. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Looks like it's fallen on me. I would move that council approve the terms of the collective agreement reached with the International Association of Firefighters for a two-year term from January 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2020.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Not seeing anyone in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And will take us into committee business, starting with item 8.1, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee from October 15th. Councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes from the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 15th as presented.
Councillor Clayton, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton, anything that you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Sure, just a couple of things. First, under Energy and Environment, this past weekend, the city hosted a swap and shop as part of Waste Reduction Week. It was at the Muscat CP Pavilion, and the intent of it was to reduce textiles and clothing that go directly to the landfill. They worked in conjunction with Aqua Terra as well as a local organization called Mamas for Mamas. There was a lineup before the event even started at the door, and the event hosted hundreds and hundreds of people. Residents were invited to bring gently-used clothing, and they worked, the city worked in turn with Goodwill, who supplied the racks and hangers, and the facility was full with clothes. There was about 254 bags and approximately 30 boxes were dropped off, which equates to about 5,600 pounds of clothing that was saved from going to the landfill. And so the event was a huge success, so thank you to city administration and other organizations that were involved with that event. It was a huge success. As well, from our last IPS meeting, I just wanted to mention that enforcement services began the fall taxi inspections. There are 154 taxis to be inspected this month. So as a reminder to people across the city, you may sometimes not know of this process, but I think it's a very thorough process, or I know it's a very thorough process, and I think it should bring a lot of comfort to people that are using taxis that the city does on a regular basis inspect these vehicles rather. And I think that's about it for today. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Move on to item 8.2, Corporate Services. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 as presented.
Councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Motion carries. Councillor O'Toole.
I'll give you my update after, but I've got two motions that came out of the meeting as well. So we have the Council Renumeration Review Committee Terms of Reference. I would move that the council approve the terms of reference for the Council Renumeration Review Committee as presented.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of terms of reference? Seeing none, I guess I'll just highlight that this committee is by policy struck at an early stage in the council term. It seems quite a ways away to be talking about elections, but the intent here is for an outgoing council to consider the salary for the next council that will follow it in order for us to be able to make those decisions and publish them with enough time that anybody out in the community considering running for council might know what the salary is. The Remuneration Review Committee, made up of public members, is required to have their recommendations back to us no later than the end of Jan, September of 2020. And that would enable us to make some decisions, and anyone in the community that might be thinking about running for council know what the salary actually would be for that next term. So thanks, Councillor O'Toole, for bringing this to council. Anything further?
I just wanted to let you know that it is a long enough time that, like you said, gives everybody a good time to look at things, make some decisions in their life if they want to dedicate four years of their life with the terms that are there, so.
Great. Thank you, Councillor O'Toole. If you ever wanted to decide how much politicians are paid, now's your chance. Make sure to put your name forward and volunteer on the city's website. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole.
And we also had the Boards and Committee Review. I move the council direct administration to implement the necessary changes to modernize the city of Grand Prairie's approach to boards and committees as outlined in the Boards and Committees' framework before October 1st, 2020.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Motion is open for discussion or debate. Any introduction, Councillor O'Toole, that you want to make to it before I go to questions and comments?
Well, we have a number of boards and committees that public members have been basically appointed to. They've requested to be on these boards, and we're just looking at a number of ways to accommodate the most efficient ways to run meetings and timelines, and there may be possibly some deletions of these boards because they're not necessarily in the current as we speak to these days.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Open for discussion or debate. Councillor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm looking forward to this process, and it's something we've talked about lots as a council, and I think that, as Councillor O'Toole has mentioned, there's ebbs and flows of some of these, and there's some deletions and some tractions that are additions that may be becoming. One for me that I'd like to still see us move forward with is adding the relaunch of the CKC Advisory Board. This is something, I guess, for me that I actually campaigned on, and I still think there's a missing gap there. I think Angela Rennings is doing a fantastic job at East Link Center, and I think that we're heading in the right direction there. I still didn't get a lot of conversation in the committee that wishes we had an advisory committee or some kind of committee for that, so I'm not saying this is a long, long-term thing, but I do think it's something that we would be remiss if we didn't add. So I'd like to see us had the relaunch of the CKC Advisory Board with a mandated focus on receiving user groups and input on strategic planning and future capital projects for this facility. And saying that, too, I also think with the 10 years coming up on that, it's a good opportunity for us to get input on how we're going to relaunch that facility or how we can potentially rebrand CKC. And so I'd like to, I guess, amend that we make sure that this committee stays involved and that we move forward with having this committee.
So I may see others in the queue. I see, so in the framework, there is a CKC Advisory Board, and there's a recommendation for discontinuing it. Maybe I'll just look at administration, Mr. Burke, on how any of the recommendations or what the next steps from this policy would be, just so we can make sure that, Councillor Palat, that we get your, that we know that this will come up somewhere, and if it isn't going to come up somewhere, then we can act on that amendment. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The history, as I understand it, was that there was an informal ad hoc committee advising CKC management in the past. It had become dormant. The last record we have, I believe, was around 2008, when this committee had had any formal standing. At this time, administration's overall recommendations were to consolidate a lot of these individual facility-based committees and to utilize the proposed Community Advisory Board as a starting place that we would also resource, and it would have a mechanism to report through a committee, which I think was a missing part of why some of the facility-based committees didn't last, was they didn't have a tasking and reporting mechanism. So I just ask that be a consideration as you're voting here, that there be some mechanism for that.
So, Councillor Palat, with hearing that, your motion didn't specify that. I wonder if, would you be comfortable if it was a direct administration bring back to standing committee recommendations on a East Link Center Advisory Committee? Because that way, administration would have an opportunity to develop the details of that and the terms of reference, like all the specifics, and that could be something we could vote on today, direct administration to do. They go and do the hard work and then bring it back to us, and we can see whether it met your intent. Is that fair, Councillor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I appreciate that. I think that would meet my intent. I just don't want to see us lose this altogether. I think there's an opportunity for the city to do some things with this, and I think if we put it through an advisory committee, I don't know if we're going to get the same results on specific user groups to that committee, so I'd want it to be very targeted to specifically the East Link Centers. We have, if administration was willing to bring back a report on that, we'd have a further conversation about that one specifically. That would meet my intent for sure.
So maybe, Councillor Palat, then my advice would be, and again, if you're comfortable, maybe we can deal with the framework and then follow in the framework, because there may be other items that come up of a similar nature. We could give specific direction to administration following, dealing with the framework. So direct administration bring back a report on, sort of following that format, and then we can get into the specifics. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. My question was for Councillor Palat. To my recollection, the CKC purpose involves school boards, user groups, anybody that was on the footprint of the CKC land, and I think your intent is more focused on the East Link facility. So I think with that changes to this, it'll be more of what you're looking for. As long as it's, I think, and I guess my question to you, is your focus on the East Link Center or CKC, as you mentioned?
Councillor Palat?
Mine's more specifically on the East Link Center.
Yeah, so I think we're good with that change. Thanks.
So, and again, that would be a follow-up motion after we deal with the framework as presented. Okay, Councillor Bressi?
Great, while I rung in to speak on that one, I look forward to that in a couple of minutes, but while I got your attention, I guess I'll make a motion of my own, dealing with the framework. And that is, I would move that Councilman Recommendations 21 to reflect continued council involvement on the youth council. And just speak to that, I think the youth council is a board that I'm personally passionate about and excited about, and I know that in most cities, including the city of Edmonton, our closest large city, there is a counselor involved in there. I think that's important. I think it's important for council to be able to provide direct perspective to these kids that are signing up for that youth council, so I'd like to see us not transition out from council being directly involved in there. At the same time, I really appreciate that there's also built into this an expectation that they come talk to all of council more, but I think it's important to have a council at all their meetings as well.
Thanks. And just for clarity, the framework that was in our council package is numbered differently than the framework that was in the agenda package because at the committee we removed 12, so it's actually Recommendation 20. Yeah, yeah. So if, so just so Councillor Bressi's intention was to amend Recommendation 20 of the council package to recognize that there would be a continued youth council representation from city council. Any discussion or debate on Councillor Bressi's amendment? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So that was, so the framework has been amended with that change. Any other discussion or debate on the framework? Seeing, Councillor Bressi, does he have something further?
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a similar motion to amend Recommendation 20 to recognize continued council involvement on the intercity forum on social policy. And just to speak to that, I think that gathering has become kind of redundant lately for council members beyond us, because the person that was on it until a couple hours ago. I think most of the time, the councilor's isn't needed there, and it's just cities talking to cities. I think that's best done by administration, but occasionally a cabinet minister does come there, and I think that if there's a cabinet minister at that meeting, if we don't have a politician there and every other mid-sized and large city in the province does, I think that puts us at a bit of an awkward place. So my advice is, the councilor is appointed there, I don't think always has to go to those. I certainly miss some myself, but we should have a councilor appointed to be there and speak for the city when a cabinet minister's there.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. So that's another specific amendment to reflect that being where there would be a council representative rather than an administration representative. Any discussion or debate on that amendment?
If I may clarify.
Sure, Councillor Bressi.
I think there should be a checkmark on both. I'm saying to add council, but I don't want to remove the administration. I think when a council's not needed there, it makes sense to send administration, so I'm not saying only council. Right now, the practice is to have a councilor and an administrator there. Most of the time, it makes sense to send just the administrator, but a councilor should be ready to go.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yeah, I'll be in full support of this. I was the council representative for the previous four years before Councillor Bressi took over, and at that point, over the course of two different governments, we saw numerous ministers, several ADMs. It wasn't a meeting that went by, we didn't have a representative from the provincial government. So it was a good catch on your part, Councillor Bressi, and when those people are in the meetings, it's invaluable to be there, not only as an advocacy piece, but also to, you know, tell our stories as well, so that when they go back, they can share that with whoever's around the table. So I appreciate that. You made this motion, and I'll be supporting it.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on this amendment? Councillor Clayton? No? Okay, I don't see anybody else with any discussion or debate on that amendment. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just had a comment, I guess a question for administration, a concern in regards to a few committees that will have administration representation, not council, when they are committees in the past that have regional representation from other elected officials. My concern, for example, on community futures and various other organizations that are now going to be moved to administration, there are specific identified elected officials, and I worry about the, you know, the dynamics of an administration person representing and in turn taking a vote on behalf of the city when in turn it's other elected officials voting. So I don't know, I don't have a solution for this, but I'm wondering if there's some thoughts from Mr. Burke in regards to what, you know, how that will lay out.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As a first note, in approving this framework, there would be some work we would have to do in consultation, particularly with the third-party groups that control their own rules. So we would have to have a discussion with them, whether they would be willing to even entertain this idea. It certainly would be different having administration at a table with other municipalities having elected officials, and that would be a decision in the direction we're seeking today is for those decisions to be made and give us this direction. But we will be coming back with any firm proposals before we take any action. The organizational meeting today filled all those spots so that there would be representation as in the past, but we would be coming back with proposals once we can have a talk with them. Our view is that some of these organizations maybe need to rethink themselves about how they operate, and that there might be other models that we, that moving forward, that they would then consider in how we do things in the region.
So, Mr. Burke, is it the case that if council adopts the framework, then any changes that might arise from its application would have to also be approved by council?
Mayor Given, that's correct. Our commitment is to come back after we've done some more of the legwork, if this is the direction they want to send us, but we will be coming back for formal approval from committee and then council.
So.
Councillor Clayton?
Sorry, on that note, then, another one that there are, there is a municipality on a, on the Pursuit of Excellence Committee, and they are there because they fund that committee, and they take that position on that committee very seriously because they feel they represent their constituents. And so through Pursuit of Excellence, with the recommendation being to dissolve it, I think administration, you know, there needs to be clear intent from our surrounding municipality, what their intent is with this committee, because I may or may not support the dissolution of this committee. However, if the municipality, if the county representative at the table wants to be there because they're funding the committee through, you know, to represent their constituents, we may have some concerns there in regards to funding of that fund that goes out to athletic endeavors. So as a framework, and with the amendments I support today, but I think that if you want these items clearly identified today, we can do that, but I'm hoping that this conversation is enough to sort of bring the framework back with some of those considerations taken into consideration.
Mr. Burke?
The answer is yes, that this would be enough for us to go do some work and come back with final proposals. Specific to that, we've identified a number of different models that were more discussed at committee about how we could flow funds. One of the considerations would be, have to be, if other partners were funding, what would happen to their funding? Would we, and that might be that they have to come up with their own process, or they may contribute to ours and we decide, but that would come back to this body.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. And if, I do it really slow, just in case, while everybody's still making up their mind, I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so if that's the case, then we can move on to voting on the framework as amended. And I guess I would just sort of reiterate that adoption of the framework does not necessarily mean adoption of the recommendations in it or sort of acting on them immediately. Administration will bring forward specific recommendations on all of these that council will have an opportunity to see, discuss, debate, and ultimately approve or not approve. So I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll call for the vote on the framework as amended. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything else that you want to highlight? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, actually, Councillor O'Toole, before we do that, well, Councillor Palat had that business rising. Councillor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we direct administration to bring back a report on a committee structure and formation for East Link Center Advisory Committee to appropriate standing committees.
So a motion of referral to administration, asking for a report back on the East Link Center Advisory Committee, open for discussion or debate. Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I'd encourage council to support this. I really appreciate the fact that we're rolling a bunch of advisory committees into one supercommittee. I suspect that some of our user groups at East Link, such as the squash club or swim teams, have specialized knowledge about that facility that wouldn't be available to that larger committee. Also, I think just the scale of East Link Center, we've, we saw a recent report that 3,200 people go through it every single day. And reports earlier than that, we know that we spend about $10 million on this facility every year when you include the debt servicing. So I think the scale of it is that it really deserves special treatment and special thought, especially as we're about 10 years into it and figuring out what's the next stage of that facility, so I hope council will support this.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on that motion of recommendation, direction to administration? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Just the director services area update. Ms. Walker presented her two weeks bi-weekly report. Once again, assessment and taxation is out there doing their job, and they're just wrapping up their supplementary assessments. Corporate facility management, administration is working with HR to review the building managers and responsibilities around the health and safety emergency response plan. Finance, administration is participating in AKAZAN events throughout the organization. September month in, third quarter is underway and will be presented to committee in November, and the budget 2023 is ongoing. Administration is finalizing information, presentations, and documents that are required. Information technology has got some projects on the go, and they've sent out a RFP for a consultant to analyze and streamline processes and aid in the implementation of an organizational ERP. And procurement, administration is working with the corporate facility management to salvage the former school board building, as well as scheduling surplus of leisure center equipment at the end of October. And that's my report. Thank you very much. And once again, thank you to that corporate services team. They work very hard, and they're not noticed that much, so I want to make sure that they aren't noticed.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Move on to Community Living Committee. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions, things we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the amendments to Policy 317, funding for large-scale tourism events. This is our one piece of business that we'll deal with here on council today. The amendments that were being proposed by administration in the policy format is to add a demonstrated financial need of the event and suitable recognition for the city. I'd also remarked a couple changes to our procedure policy as well, so it's that financial position.
So it's that financial position is based off of a budgeted surplus deficit or nature of funding of the event. It also changes the date for application submissions to be turned in a month earlier, from March 1st to February 1st, so to all entrepreneurs in the tourism industry. I'd encourage you to fill out your applications a month sooner, please.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Oh, yeah, there is a couple of things. We had, we had a delegation from the Center for Creative Arts Society of Grand Prairie come in and and talk with committee about the things that the center has been up to and is doing, and how their relationship with the city works. Also, from our Director Service area update, just a couple of things to note. There will be a Peace Country Female Hockey Tournament this weekend on October 26th and 27th. This will be an all-girls jamboree in memory of Marge McOssland. Also, in Parks News, in September, Parks works with volunteers from TD Bank, Pembina Pipeline Corporation, and the Avondale School Green Team to plant a total of 362 ornamental, native, and edible trees, shrubs, and plants. And the grants were received from Tree Canada and TD Tree Day for this project, which is a good news story, I think, especially considering the hard work those kids put in to do their own fundraising portion of it. Also, the hours for the Musca C P Park Pavilion, the Ernie Radburn Pavilion, have been changed to reflect the building utilization late at night, and the building is now closing at 7:30 PM. And we'll keep you up to date as a public and as part of the organization if that changes going into the winter season at all, for better or for worse, as far as time goes. That's my report for today. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. I'd just like to extend my thanks to the chairs of those standing committees over the last two years. Certainly appreciate all of your work and always being the ones to bring all the recommendations to council. I'd like to congratulate Counselors Bressi, Minha, Friesen, and Palat on taking up the chair of our new four standing committees. As people will have noted in the package, we now have four standing committees to align with our different directors, but thanks very much to Counselors O'Toole, Clayton, and Thiessen for all of your work in chairing those committees over the past two years. With all of our committee business done, I don't believe we had any items of correspondence, nor delegation business, or nor notices of motion, so we will recess our council meeting, and we will return for public hearings and scheduled delegations at 6:00 PM.